On Wednesday, January 18th, 2023, notice of this meeting was emailed to the press in the Mainland Journal. Notice was also delivered that day to the Egg Harbor Township Clerk and posted on bulletin board in Township Hall. Mrs. Bonjorno?
Here.
Mr. Delbarca?
Here.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Here.
Ms. Hyman?
Here.
Mr. Ireland?
Here.
Mr. Price?
Here.
Mr. Seppi?
Here.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Here.
Here. Can we please stand for the flag flip?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and consider Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with whose justice is our.
I want to welcome you to our August meeting, and we need a motion for a minute.
Motion, Ireland.
Second.
Sullivan.
Yeah.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Bonjorno?
Yes.
Mr. Delbarca?
Yes.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Yes.
Ms. Hyman?
Yes.
Mr. Ireland?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Seppi?
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
And Mrs. Slod.
Yes.
Okay, Dr. Gruccio.
My turn?
Your turn.
Just like that, it's August. I cannot believe it, it's the end of August, but here we are, last board meeting of the summer, and spending the last couple of weeks getting ready to roll out all we need to know to open the school year. And I'll get to talk about that in September, but after two days of administrative training and a whole lot of information going on in this room, we feel like we're really ready and excited. But in the meantime, let's talk about what has gone on, maybe not, over the last month here in Egg Harbor Township School District. Regarding student achievement, we're very proud, and we're going to hear a little bit later about our Aspire program, where it's been and where it's going to go. In our towns program, just being able to serve our community in educating children before and after school. Professional development occurred for teachers and administrators. We had interventionist reading special self-contained teachers, learning lab teachers, math co-teachers, all in over the summer for professional development opportunities. We had our kindergarten transition planning and screening, and administration, just as I said, went through many, many meetings and trainings. We have a lot of new things, and we have a lot of things. And when you have a lot of things going on in a large district, it's very important that everybody is on the same page. We talk about having one voice, one message for consistency purposes. Just sharing out our pre-K to five extended school year that occurred at Davenport over the last couple of months, and these are some pictures that the supervisors of special education wanted to share, so that everybody could see everyone having fun and learning and having great opportunities for extended learning. All smiles, good stuff, more good stuff. We were just notified a couple of days ago for 2023 and '24 that we are the recipients once again of the 21st Century Community Learning Center's Competitive Application Grant, and we call that Aspire here in Egg Harbor Township. And so we've received $425,000 over the next five years. And Mrs. Boyd is here, and she does a great job with that. Can't do it without her knowledge and her experience with this, and she's going to be here a little later to share all that, right, Kristen? So, great job, we appreciate you, your passion, and man, there's passion, and her innovation in how we serve our students. Climate and culture, been working on security assessments and drills, make sure safety is in place. Our senior ambassadors, it's a group of senior students who were trained in a program called Wingman, and they learned how to become a team and learned how to be able to turn key information and build confidence in our incoming freshmen. We're preparing for opening days, days not only at the administrative level, but our custodians and facilities department has been hard at work inside and outside the buildings from painting and cleaning and working on the guardians and putting down mulch and painting the sidewalks. So, a lot's going on, and there still has a lot that has to happen. System principals retreat and meetings, I spoke of that. We've had meetings with transportation, food services, custodians, facilities and security, they either happen or they're coming up in the next week or so. And preschool orientation occurred. Our community partnerships, always like to reach out and recognize, we had National Night Out where everybody was out, sharing with the community the resources that we have and checking out the resources that the community have. Atlanta Care, always working side by side with them, their school, mental health school specialists. And the American Heart Association, we formed a partnership with them. That'll be rolled out in September. Egg Harbor Police that we work with, our Egg Harbor Township Rec Department, and the youth night, I just want to share, is September 14th. So if you're involved in the rec department, come on out on the 14th to the football game. And our national anthem project was shared with us, the date is October 20th. And our EHT Pride Festival, September 30th, we welcome all. Here's some noteworthy dates for the Board of Education and for our community. August 28th is freshman orientation, all invited, Board of Education, 6:00 PM. August 29th and 30th is new staff orientation. September 1 and 5 is our welcome back and professional learning days for our staff. September 4th, school is closed. On the 6th, our students arrive. So the yellow buses will be rolling, and hopefully we'll get them all on and get them into our schools. That's a full day. And on September 30th is our Pride Festival. Back-to-school nights, collaborative effort in this room over the last couple of days, deciding when our back-to-school nights are going to be and how they're going to be, all right? So here are the dates that are just released, fresh, hot off the press. These will be shared with the different partners that we have in the next upcoming days. And talk about this Egg Harbor Township Pride Festival once again. Put it on your calendar, we want you out there. Athletic teams, activities, academics, arts, music, tours of the school, fun, crafters, food trucks, cannot stress it more. At this time, we'd like to share a little Egg Harbor Township pride. We have our registration and truancy officers here, and our supervisor, come on up.
I'll turn it over to Mr. West, who oversees that department.
At this time, I would like to call up, she's already here, our registration supervisor, Cindy Hendrickson. This past June, Cindy organized gift bags for our homeless students. Collective effort between registration, transportation, and our community partners to assist our students was simply amazing. So I'm going to call Cindy up so she can give a rundown of what she did in June with the help of all of our important stakeholders. Ms. Hendrickson?
Okay, so we collaborated with English Creek Shoprate, the manager over there, George, and got a list together. I came in one morning, we were going back and forth with what we wanted to put in it, and came in the next morning, Lisa says, "I compiled a list up, look at it, look and see what you like and see what it is." So we tossed back and forth what items we wanted to put in there, some non-perishable items, beverages, some snacks and stuff for the kids, and we were able to, we got fifty bags actually from the food bank given to us that we could put the stuff in. And with the help of the board and administration, we were also able to buy backpacks for the kids and gym bags, drawstring gym bags. So 32 families actually got all the items delivered to them. And I have to give a big thank you to my staff who helped with that, which is Michelle Leuge and Lisa Avis, because without them helping pack and, you know, me going back and forth and, you know, I was changing things and getting our list together, making sure we had everything ready, I couldn't have done it without them. I also want to give a big thank you to transportation, and I see Michelle's over there in the corner if she wants to come up, because, you know, it was me just going over there one morning to say, "Hey, do you remember I need it?" She goes, "What?" And I'm like, "I kind of need a bus, you know, I need something we can drive to deliver to the families." So we did. We literally went and had a bus, and I knew John is on his way here or back there if he could come up too, because John actually went, took the bus, drove the bus to Shoprate for us. George, the manager there, and the produce manager also, which was Glenn, actually with us helped load all these boxes and boxes of items into the bus. And John actually came back in the bus with Lisa and I, and it was so hot, and helped us divide them all up for 32 families amongst the seats. Lisa had signs put up, and it just, it just went really well. So it was very nice to go out and deliver to those families, their faces, their expressions, they couldn't appreciate it enough. So I was glad and happy to be a part of that, and I want to thank the board as well. As administrators, thank you for letting me just take that ball and run with it, with my staff, because, and the team that we had, because it was excellent, it really was. So I thank you.
So we have a certificate for all these wonderful people, and Michelle in the back, who is hiding, which...
I do want to, yeah, our bus driver, without our bus driver, Annie, she was excellent. So I forgot to mention her, and I want to mention her, she's not here today, but she was great. She literally would say, "I'll get out and I'll help you," you know, and she'd help me carry bags too and do whatever she could to help us too. So I want to make a shout out to her too, and thank her as well.
So from the Board of Ed, Egg Harbor Township School District Superintendent's Award, certificate of recognition that acknowledges that all these wonderful people have been recognized for organizing the Mighty Eagle Gift Bag donations to students and families in Egg Harbor Township School District. Signed by Dr. Gruccio, August 22nd, 2023. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much. Lisa Avis, and Michelle Leuge, and John. Michelle, you want to come up? We just thought it was real important to recognize what goes on. Sometimes people don't, it's behind the scenes, and, you know, and I say, "No, you're coming to a board meeting, and we're going to let the public know and the board know that these are the little things that are huge, they go such a long way." And again, I just appreciate the passion and the concern for our kids that you have. So, thank you, thank you very much. It's going an extra mile, it really is, thank you. All right, let's see our superintendent's report that Alan, Mr. Alan Vargas put together for me, collecting snippets of what happened this autumn.
As you can see, there's action going on here, it's not a dull moment going on, and EHT is the place to be. That's what happened this August, and thank you to the custodians who are now scampering to get this place cleaned up and ready for opening day, because there's a lot of action going on here. All right, without further ado, my report is finished in terms of what I present, but I'm going to turn it over again to Mr. West for some more.
Thank you, Dr. Gruccio. At this time, I'm going to ask Ms. Kristen Boyd to come up. She's the Director of our Talents and Inspire Program. A tireless worker, cares about our kids, is innovative, and especially from a STEM standpoint. So we're very lucky to have her, and our program continues to take off, and she's going to give us a quick rundown of what we've accomplished this summer and what the future looks like in Talents and Inspire. Ms. Boyd?
Unlike Dr. Gruccio, who's an expert, I have to write what I'm going to say, though, I'm going to read a little bit. But I did, just like after school, before school, and summer camp, it's always better with a friend, so I brought Ms. Chisco with me, who is integral in organizing and planning and just operating the summer program this summer. Without her, I probably would have lost it. Yes, so it's always better with friends. But good evening, I am Kristen Boyd, I'm the Director of Extended Enrichment, Home of Aspire and Talents. First, I want to thank Dr. Gruccio and the board for inviting me here. So we were invited to share with you what we did this summer, and the summer programs that took place at Miller. There was a lot happening in the district, in various buildings, different programs. There was ESY and EHT Ready and the Chinese Language Program, Aspire and Talents. Talents is actually still going on, we don't end until this Thursday. And there was other programs too that I did not mention. So specifically, I'm here to update you on the after-school program for instruction, recreation, and enrichment, AKA Aspire. The After School Alliance has identified OST programs and summer learning programs such as Aspire as integral parts and critical parts of high-functioning education systems. Quality OST programs have demonstrated increases in academic gains, increases in school day attendance, increases in school day behavior, and we support working families. With all this in mind, Aspire was created during the 1718 school year when the district was awarded the Anita M. Lowey 21st Century Community Learning Center Grant. Since that time, we have served over 1,500 students in 4th and 5th grade. We've served over 140,000 after-school and summer meals, and provided countless hours of homework help, tutoring, remediation, organized recreation, health and fitness, positive youth development, and so much more. This spring, we applied for the New Jersey After School and Summer Learning Grant. The purpose of that grant was to enhance our current after-school programs and fund a summer learning program. The goal was to incorporate career exploration and really focus on improving behavior and engaging parents. The idea of the Aspire Academies came from a number of thoughts I had at the time. First, focusing on the benefits of summer learning, and then next, thinking about what the students had participated in during the school year and those classes that they really liked the most. Also, taking into account district goals and initiatives such as literacy for all and improving student achievement. Then figuring out a way to make that into a program, meet all the mandates of the grant, also operate within the constraints of the grant, and then remaining fun, because that's what we do, we sneak in the learning and kind of wrap it in fun. So we came up with these goals for our program this summer, and the first was to provide educational experiences with targeted activities and career exploration. The second was to provide more time for students to practice skills, gain knowledge, explore topics of interest, socialize with peers, and do all this in an informal setting. And then finally, provide them opportunities to work collaboratively in small groups and then to demonstrate what they had learned. So in order to offer students the breadth and depth of a career field, we incorporated classroom learning and practicum time focused on six career areas. Those areas were art, aviation, environmental sciences, engineering, health, nutrition, and fitness, and esports. No, I'll do it. So when I was planning this, we, I reached out to parents and I said, "Hey, look, we want your student to participate." However, we want them to choose, and it was so important for them to be able to select the academy they were going to participate in. Student voice and student choice is really important, but we also knew that it would be very integral in their engagement and their wanting, and their willingness to wake up super early in the morning, because the program starts at 8:00 AM in the summer, and for them to participate. So students pre-selected an academy based on their interests and aptitudes in a particular area. From there, students participated in both classroom and hands-on, student-centered projects and activities. In addition, they receive breakfast and lunch daily. They participated in a daily pep rally led and planned and led by Ms. Chisco, and that pep rally include physical challenges, games, activities, along with daily trivia and a different character education lesson every single day. Along with that, they went on nine collectively field trips in four weeks. But all that, that was not all, so with these funds, we were also able to add two additional field trips to the school year program, one in May and one in June, one on a Saturday and one on a Sunday. We added a silent dance party for students and their parents, so you can see some of the pictures there. And then we did the gallery walk at the end of the summer program, wherein we invited families to come in and see all the projects that the students had worked on. This summer, 100 student participants were engaged in 80 hours of programming in 16 days. Some of the highlights included 11 of our 3rd, 4th, and 5th grade students who were certified in CPR, first aid, and AED. It also included students who learned the Six Simple Machines and used that knowledge to construct an amusement park using Legos, connects, and wood planks. And although not inclusive, our engineering and aviation students constructed a obstacle course made out of PVC pipe and pool noodles, and then learned how to navigate drones through that course. So we're going to take a look at what they did. All in all, it was a great summer of fun and learning. Students worked together, they collaborated on ideas, they figured out problems, and collectively experienced the careers of their chosen academy. I just want to take this time to thank Dr. Gruccio and the board, just the administrative team, because they support Talents and Inspire, enrichment, and engaging opportunities for students relentlessly. I've never worked in a district where I felt like I was part of the family and never like a stepchild, like, oh, they're there in the morning, they're there in the afternoon, and we're kind of forgotten about. I've never once felt like that working here. Yeah, so, next slide. We had a bunch of partners, if you could see on that slide, that helped make this a thing. So Aspire will be back in October, it's official. We got the email today that we were approved as a cohort 19 recipient. It is 425,000, but it's not over five years, it's every year for five years, so the total was 2.125 million.
I don't mind being standard corrected on that. So, wow, right? Absolutely, wow. All that's going on, this lady right here, her staff. You know, listening to kids, student voice, meeting kids' needs, what better example of embrace, engage, educate right here, from arts to engineering, career exploration, right? That was one of our big things last year and will continue to be, and, you know, Mrs. Boyd just latched onto that and said, "Here we go," and made it happen, and then to bring the kids on those field trips. So, amazing work, I don't know when you sleep, you're here early in the morning and late at night, but you appreciate us, and I appreciate that, but I really, really appreciate you. So thank you so much.
Can we make a comment? Okay. Make a comment now?
We have one more presentation from a director, from the director world, and then we'll move to assistant superintendent, but we have universal breakfast to talk about. We have Mr. Tom Beck here, who's our expert chef.
Thank you.
It's all yours.
Thank you. Great in the kitchen, when I'm surrounded by stainless steel, it's the IT stuff that's sometimes challenging. But thank you, thank you, Dr. Gruccio, and the Board of Education for inviting me here tonight. It's hard to believe it's my 28th opening, you know, here in the district, and we're ready to roll. And we're ready to roll for the new school year coming up. We had 454-foot tractor trailers come rolling in today and unload pallets of supplies and food, so we're very grateful that supply chain issues are starting to diminish a little bit. But as I get into the presentation, I'll discuss a little bit to you about the inflation... But as I get into the presentation, I'll discuss a little bit to you about inflation challenges that everyone in the community is still, you know, faced with. Last spring, I believe it was, the audit, we go through an audit process every year. It's usually in the summertime, but last year they ran a little late. And I believe they ended in the spring of last year. Every year, they do an exit conference with the public, the school board. And one of the things that came up, and I happened to be watching the board meeting that evening, and as the auditor stood at the podium, said that we were too successful, and fiscally. And, you know, and I'm looking at my computer and I'm thinking to myself, how the heck could we be too successful? I'm never, you know, we're never successful enough. And I'm looking at Kristin Dougherty, she's my head cook at Fernwood over there, who was actually part of the process of making sure that the students are fed properly and they have everything that they need and cost of control and everything that goes right along with it, right down to staffing. So Kristin, I want to thank you. If the rest of the ladies were here too, I'd be, you know, reaching out to them as well, but we can do that next week at our meeting. So during the process, you know, we fiscally had a surplus that raised some eyebrows to the auditors and to Mr. Dan and say, hey, listen, we have to, we have to do something about this. And all the years that I've been here, it was always a, you know, for those who I've known for 25-plus years, it's always been a struggle. So now we're in a position of strength, which is really, really a great thing for the community. And I'm very proud to say that we don't cost the township residents a penny, you know, as far as taxes are concerned, which is really a great feat, you know, when you're only charging a $3 lunch. So thank you, Kristin, and representing us. So the recommendation was as well, hey, listen, you know, let's start upgrading some equipment. So Dan and I, we came up with a plan, and we have our high school plan in place. There was a little bit of a delay due to the HVAC project that we have going on over there, so we have that up and running. And then I was able to give Dan our equipment needs for the two middle schools. So we have that in place and the bid process is moving along. But it, sometimes I get impatient. And I'm thinking to myself, all right, well, they want us to spend this money. I'm waiting for the bureaucracy to take place with the bids. And so I came up with this idea, and it was at an administrator's meeting, and I was very, very excited about it. So I practically ran over to Dr. Gruccio and I said, hey, what do you think about this idea? She's like, whoa, 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 take it easy. Let's do a, let's do a presentation first at one of your monthly meetings, which we did. And it made sense to Dan and to our department. So what we, what we want to do as a department is, for the first time since I've been here, is to be able to give back to the community. You know, there are people that are in this township, especially during COVID, that I became very close with when we were delivering food out of the trunk of our cars and to families that just didn't have it. And sometimes you just scratch your head and you wonder, how the heck are they making it? So we always see the family, the children from the serving line, but when you get out there in the neighborhood and you're really getting a chance to talk to the grandmoms and, you know, the parents and things like that, it really, it really touches home. So now that we're in this position, I can probably say that we would like to introduce universal breakfast to the families, which in a shorter version is free. How we would like to implement it, we'd like to implement it as a pilot, okay? Now, Mr. Delabarka knows about pilot programs because when Mr. D was at Davenport, we did a pilot program for breakfast, okay? And it was the first time, and then it became mandated shortly after that. So I think what is going to happen, well, I know what's going to happen, in the next three to five years in the state of New Jersey, they're going to offer universal breakfast and lunch. That's coming. So I think if we can get ahead of the curve and if it becomes a very, you know, successful program, you know, then, you know, we're ahead of the game. We're already in practice. Food inflation, inflationary problems are still, we're still struggling with them. I purchased almost $2 million worth of food that's served in 180 days to the students. And, you know, just looking at the prices, not only of food but of supplies, it's really, it's really like eye-opening, to be quite honest. We've been doing this a long time. And then there's fuel costs, you know, that the truckers have to deal with. And hourly rates and salaries are definitely not keeping up with the cost of this inflation. So that's another reason why we have to, we have to move forward to try to help the community out. Two years ago, we, we had the free breakfast program, and it was, and it was a huge success. We were serving about 60% of the student enrollment. And then last year, when we went back to the National School Breakfast Program, it dropped to 25. So that 40% really was, was really just an interesting factor in this, in this process of providing the free breakfast. Like, how can we get those percentages back up? There's not a whole heck of a lot of time for kids to eat. There's breakfast is usually a 10, 15-minute window, but I believe that with the free breakfast process, there'll be less cash handling, so the meals will be a little bit quicker because the popularity is definitely going to rise, you know, once that happens. So, you know, why, why are we doing it? Food insecurity. You know, students now won't have to worry about, you know, where their next breakfast is going to come from. So when they come in, get off the bus, put their book bags down, and the faculty sends them off to the cafeteria, we'll be waiting for them. It'll, it'll help eliminate lunch shaming. We really don't have too much of that problem because we welcome everyone with open arms with that. You would see that in our lunch participation. But anyone that feels uncomfortable is always more than welcome to come up and have a meal with our staff. And lunch debt. You know, lunch debt was, is a, is a huge problem because of the restrictions on trying to collect that money. But this would just be another way or another tool to kind of help the parents and the guardians eliminate that hassle, so to speak, of coming up with money because a lot of times the parents, they just don't have it. And then, most importantly, we're support staff. Educate the, you know, the kids, you know, so the children, you know, you never want to see children hungry in a classroom because they're not learning. They're thinking about where their next meal's going to come from, and they're more concerned about that than actually learning, you know, what's on the smart board. So that's really about it. I'm just a real proud director and proud of my staff and just proud to be EHT, and my heart's always been here. So, does anybody have any questions?
I would just like to say that excellent job, as always, Mr. Beck, with the presentation and everything. And it's something I'm going to touch on a little bit during the legislative report. Like, I spoke with Mr. Delabark about it, with the county superintendent of schools, about the program that is coming up. It's made its way through the legislation, and it looks, I'm very happy and proud that we're ahead of this. We're actually...
Oh, yeah. Yeah, there's roughly 10 to 12 different states in the country that actually have already pushed forward with it.
Yes.
I just, as, we belong to a cooperative of 60 districts that are all self-operating. And the directors, my colleagues, and my, my equals, you know, we would just hope that they would rip the Band-Aid off sooner, just to get the process going.
Like you said, the bottom line, it's so important that...
Oh, absolutely.
You have to eat. All of us feel the same way. If you don't eat, I know I get irritable if I'm hungry, let alone trying to study and sit through school all day. So it's just, you're doing a tremendous job with the dining services, and I'm very proud to see that we're ahead of the ball on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Mr. Beck. Appreciate it and excited that we're able to roll this out this year. Pilot or no pilot, it is good stuff that I think is going to happen for a while. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Boyd? Mrs. Boyd? Could you come back and stay for a little bit, just a couple minutes? And you too. You too, Michelle.
I just want to say I had the pleasure of attending the Aspire Academy CTE Summer Incentive Open House and Gallery Walk that was held August the 2nd, and it was really amazing. And I really enjoyed, like, going to the different classrooms and seeing the projects that the kids, the students completed. And I particularly liked the drones, when the kids were flying the drones around. Everything that I saw was, was really amazing, and the kids were very talented, especially like the esports program, where a number of the kids had created their own logo as well as created their own games. So it was very exciting to see that, and I was happy I was able to attend that. And thank you. You're doing an excellent job there.
Yes, I want to second that because I did come and visit, and the kids, nothing but smiles. It was, it was, it was really good. And I think, was it, the state was there that day? Is that when they decided that they were going to read?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
When I told her that I got the email that same day, I checked it on my phone, she said, oh, wow, you got it? She didn't know.
Oh, okay. That's wild.
It just happened to come out that day.
Yep, no, it was a wonderful program, and I know the kids and the parents, they thought the same. So thank you very much.
President, if I may comment also, I just wanted to, I love the Aspire program, and I get always good reports about it. In fact, parents will call and they'll say, well, is this the Talents program? I go, well, actually, it's all of the good things rolled up into one. And I know prior to 2018, I think it was Talents with the program, was it?
Kids Club.
Yeah, so. And it's not like it replaced Talents, it's just that everything's been rolled up into one, and it offers all the great programs and exciting activities for the students. So that's all, I just wanted to comment on that, that you're doing a great job with the program, so, thank you.
I'm going to make it quick. And I just want to say, we have a house full tonight, and Ed Harbor Township, this is not something, I guess what I'm going to say is that new, in a sense of the program, the Aspire program, I feel like I remember when Ms. Boyd first started. And she took that program and really turned it into something amazing. She took it from just an after-school program to a, I feel like it set a trend for the Aspire, for Ed Harbor Township. And I also wanted to just say to Mr. Beck, I know he left already, but for us to be able to be a district to sustain our own food program without being privatized over all these years, I just want to say that's a, that's an ode to him. Because that's a, there are most, a lot of school districts are privatized, or, you know, they have outside companies coming in, but you're able to keep the employees and keep, keep it in-house. So just wanted to give you a shout-out for that, too.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Beck. All right, Mrs. Moore's.
All right, I get to follow all that excitement with some state test results. Get excited, everyone. No, but the first is, is actually, is exciting. These are our access results. So this is the, it's aligned to the WIDA standards, which helps us assess where our language learners are in listening, reading, writing, and speaking. Here are the different levels that are measured, the oral language, literacy, comprehension, and then they receive an overall score. So it is a rubric, which is always helpful as a teacher when we have rubrics. It helps us know how to instruct and where to start our instruction with our students. And a 4.5 is considered proficient when students then exit the main learning program and move into the supplemental. So this is just a sample of what a score report would look like, that goes home to the parents and what our teachers see. And it breaks down, as you can see, into the performance levels. But one of the nice things with this assessment is that it comes with the can-do descriptors. So instead of focusing on deficits, it talks about what students are able to do, which gives teachers a starting point of where to build on student strengths within their language acquisition. So here are our results for Ed Harbor Township, and it just gives us an indication of where our students are. So this isn't, you know, we're used to looking at our results and looking at proficiency in a sense of where we are percentage-wise in comparison to the state. This is really just a way for us to know where students are so that we can gauge where instruction begins, and then we can track that longitudinally across their career here in our district to make sure that our students are growing. And then this is just a visual representation, just to get an idea of what different levels we have in our building. So you can see at the high school, we have a wide range of students that are both at the entering level and then reaching on the other end. This is broken down by subgroup program. So this allows us to look at students who have other indicators, whether they also are classified as special education, they have a Section 504, or if they are classified as free and reduced lunch. And this is a visual representation. We only had one student for 504, that's why it's 100%, but that is great. Most importantly is what we do with our data, right? So we have all this information on students. How do we address it and help support them? So as you know, we have an extensive ELL program within each of our buildings. There is a class as well as supplemental that is offered to assist our students in becoming successful. In our middle schools, we have the What I Need, where it's an extra period in the day where students can go and get assistance, study hall in grades nine to 12. And again, those can-do statements, those are really important when our teachers are planning instruction and helping to support our students. We have an after-school immigrant program, and we have cohorts of teachers who have gone through 15 hours of sheltered English instruction, professional development. So it's a pretty intensive PD where they learn how to best support our students who are learning English within the Gen Ed classroom setting. And they then do some professional development on our professional learning days to widen the scope of that learning. Now, here is an update to the code that is going to be in effect now. And they are changing the terminology from English language learner to multilingual learners. So this is, this change is for a few reasons, but again, this is to kind of work along with that strength-based look at students rather than deficit-based. So rather than saying they're learning English, we're looking at what are students bringing in as multilingual learners from the language that they already have as their primary language. This is going to be preschool through 12th grade. The other piece of it is that we're going to ensure that all of our teachers receive professional development on WIDA, on the standards, on these can-do descriptors, and that all documents that are sent home from school must be in the home language. So districts are allowed to phase this in. Right now, we're working with our supervisor to come up with an implementation process. I know Mr. West is working with her on a policy so that we're updating everything to make sure that we're supporting our students and families in this area. All right. Also reporting out tonight on our NJGPA results. So for those of you that don't know, the state of New Jersey has gone back to an 11th grade assessment for graduation. Before, we were using the NJSLA 10th grade assessment, and then we had a few years off of the state assessment. Last year, 11th grade was given as a pilot, and then this year, it counted for the graduation requirement. So it is to measure the extent to which students are graduation-ready. So you're going to see that it says in the scores, it's based on their readiness to There is still the different pathways that our students can have to graduation. They can still have a portfolio appeal, they can still have other assessments, and we had quite a few of our students qualify and meet graduation requirements based on those other pathways. So here is how we did in, in the district. We have 77% of our students who are graduation-ready in ELA and 52% in math. Here, that is broken down into our different subgroups. But most importantly with this, the scores are not... But most importantly with this, the scores are not obviously where we want them to be, right? You don't want to have that. We did have a hun, over a hundred and forty students qualified based on other pathways already, um, but we do have other intervention strategies in place. One is, all of our Algebra I classrooms are now gonna have two teachers in them, starting in September. So there was professional development over the summer for our teachers to talk about that model, what that's gonna look like, and how we can support our students in Algebra I. We also had extensive, um, training this past year with implementation of, um, a framework called Building Thinking Classrooms in Math, which allows students to collaborate more and be more inquiry-based, and work through math problems. It allows for formative assessment and that quick instruction. And then continued professional development around the multi-tiered systems of support and differentiated instruction. Of course, as I mentioned, this Sheltered English Instruction, um, as well as for, specifically for our special education teachers, and then also for our Title I. And then finally, in the reading world, or in ELA, we added an additional resource called Power Up, which breaks down into the foundational skills where students need intervention to help booster those scores. And then also, for our Tier Three students, we have Read 180 and System 44, which goes down to that phonics level. And that is my report on the assessments.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions?
Okay, my mic's green. Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to comment, um, on, I know you do a great job with curriculum and instruction, and it's, everything's fantastic in that respect. But with some of the test scores, I think we need to realize that a test score is just a test score. Sometimes, it may be a little lower in some areas, sometimes a little higher in other areas, but it kind of has a way of balancing out at the end of the day, and some people are better test takers than others, so you can't always rely on what the numbers say. You can't really, you know, it's not written in stone as far as actually, when it comes down to education. But I think we're doing a great job, I'm very proud of our program in Egg Harbor Township, and looking forward to continuing with the great work, so, thank you.
Anybody else? Yes, thank you.
I just also wanted to say, um, with the state assessments, the, the percentage doesn't look great when you look at it on paper, but as we all know, um, the state has set the goalposts high, then low, then high, so it's hard to gauge exactly where we should be. So I think that it's great that our district is taking the initiative to, um, do interventions, and to add extra, like labs and study halls, and, um, extra teachers to assist our students to progress, because that's the main focus, is to focus on what we can do versus where we are. And I think that that's amazing, that we're taking that initiative.
Okay, thank you. Since we have a roomful of new people, um, I think you've learned enough tonight about Egg Harbor Township schools. So we're going to move to personnel, and that way, you can go out and celebrate. So, um, Dr. Charlton, you have anything else for Personnel Committee? Do I have to do that?
Thank you, Madam.
Oh, wait a minute, Mr. Dr. Charlton. Um, I have to do public comment first. Boy, I was gonna do that after I did the personnel. Okay, Board values and welcomes comments and opinions from residents. This meeting is now open to public comments for agenda items only. If your question pertains to litigation, student, or personnel items, please see the superintendent after the meeting, as the board does not discuss these matters in public. Depending on the nature and complexity of your questions, the board secretary may ask for your contact information, so that someone can get back to you with a response. As a reminder, this is a public meeting, and all comments should be made appropriate for public setting, and made in a respectful manner. If you wish to speak, please come to the podium and state your full name and address. Does anyone wish to address the board? Okay. So we're going to move to personnel. Okay, we need a motion for...
Motion.
(laugh) Nine point two to nine point eight. Say, uh, discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Mrs. Bonjorno?
Yes.
Mr. Delabarka?
Yes.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Yes.
Ms. Hyman?
Yes.
Mr. Ireland?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Seppi?
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
And Mrs. Slaggy? Yes. Okay, Dr. Gruccio.
Let's get this party started. Um, we will begin with introductions here, just please stand, and we'll begin with a paraprofessional who's now a teacher at Swift-Slayball, Praki Patel. A speech therapist at Swift-Slayball Complex, Amy Meyer. A speech therapist at Bargantown in Davenport, Kristina Adamczuk. Occupational therapist at Davenport, Cassidy Pujey. Behavior specialist at the high school, Kaitlin Gallagher. A paraprof, a paraprofessional who's now a teacher at Davenport, Maria Luis Di Amadio. Okay, here we go, new teacher at Davenport, Greg Kresznalski. Teacher at Davenport, Christina Marquet. Teacher at Alder Avenue Middle School, Rachel Peterson. Also a teacher at Alder Avenue Middle School, Kristen Marshall. Teacher at Alder Avenue Middle School, Eric Bedola Tourez. Teacher at Swift-Slayball Complex, Rebecca Ramp. New teacher at our high school, Isabella Rizzo. The teacher at Alder Avenue Middle School, Melanie Flores. Teacher at the Swift-Slayball Complex, Tina Wireback. New teacher at the high school, David Santos. Moving on to Transportation Department, new five-hour driver, Thomas Bowen. Assistant cook at the high school, Bruce Goodes. A part-time paraprofessional to a full-time paraprofessional at Davenport, Ms. Rachel Brown. Also a part-time paraprofessional moving to a full-time paraprofessional at the high school, Joseph Zamietto. Part-time paraprofessional to a full-time paraprofessional at the high school, Robert Mooney. All right, we have a series of paraprofessionals, beginning with Davenport, Michelle Deiter. Also at Davenport, Randy Stubert. Also at Davenport, Carolyn Callender. Moving on to the high school, Cassandra Santiago. Also at the high school, paraprofessional Clarence Jones. Paraprofessional at the high school, Felicia Giorgiani. Paraprofessional at Bargantown, Iliana Exorova. Also a paraprof, paraprofessional at Bargantown, Catherine Aspina. Paraprofessional at the Swift-Slayball Complex, Brooke Mung. The new custodians at the Miller School, Kevor Ricketts. And Betty Jo Snyder. And moving on to Administration, moving from a teacher in the district to our Career Technology and Education Supervisor, Christina Kupacinski. And our new twelve-month Special Education Supervisor, who will be housed at the high school, I believe, is Dr. Gillian Clayton. All right, well, big congratulations, that's a whole lot of hires, and big welcome to Egg Harbor Township School District. Uh, we can't wait for you to get started. So with that, go out and celebrate, congratulations and welcome.
I know everyone's leaving, but Trey Jones, Mr. Jones, and Ms. Santiago, I just want to say, this young lady right here, her daughter was a former student in Egg Harbor Township, Sierra Santiago, uh, graduate, she graduated from the high school through the Eagle, Eagle Academy Program, and she is doing amazing. And Trey Jones used to be one of the, one of my former students, I just want to say I'm really proud of you all, that's all. And I mean, welcome to everybody, but I just saw they stood out, to have, to have you part of the family.
We met on, uh, the fifteenth of August. Our meeting was forty-five minutes long, 'cause I like to move quick. We just, Transportation Department, Mr. Smith discussed the summer transportation and noted that the entire staff did an amazing job. He also noted the high school passes would be mailed this week, followed by pre-K through eight by August twenty-third. Food service, it was noted that the district completed the New Jersey Department of Agriculture, which you heard from Mr. Beck, so mo, and he was talking about the universal breakfast plan. We invited him to come and present it to the public, because we're just so proud of that department. And the same with the bus department, the Transportation Department, um, they've just, the people that were here tonight are the unsung heroes. Uh, they don't, they're not in the public often, but they just do an amazing job, they love our kids. Facility Department, there's many projects that the department is working on, and noted that all schools will be ready September first. Mr. Smith noted, uh, that the building walkthroughs will take place at the end of this month. Business Office, Mr. Smith noted the business office is preparing now for the annual audit. Mr. Smith reviewed several items on the agenda for approval, including our, the monthly reports, professional service contracts, bid authorizations, dual-use requests, transportation joint chairs, the NJDOE project submissions, Stockton University affiliation agreement, and the acceptance of the Twenty-First Century Grant Funding. The committee also reviewed the fiscal year 2023 semi-program snapshot, Eagle Academy expenses, and the NJATH Consortium, which is the New Jersey Aviation Technology Hub, and alternative buses. Um, our next meeting will be on September nineteenth at six o'clock in the board office, and our possible topics will be recycling information and township development projected enrollment, which will be going up. So you'll be hearing a lot about that in the next, uh, few months. That's my report, thank you.
We need a motion on seven point two and seven point three.
Mr. Price, I'll make that motion. Second, our...
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Mr. Delabarka?
Yes.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Yes.
Ms. Hyman?
Yes.
Mr. Ireland?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Seppi?
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Slaggy?
Yes.
Okay. We need a motion for seven point four through seven point twenty-four.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mrs. Bonjorno?
Yes.
Mr. Delabarka?
Yes.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Yes.
Ms. Hyman?
Yes.
Mr. Ireland?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Seppi?
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
And Mrs. Slaggy?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Moss, do you have any updates for curriculum? Okay. Mrs. Bonjorno?
I need, oh, there we go. Um, okay, so our, um, committee met on, um, August fifteenth at seven PM. We weren't as fast as forty-five minutes, so an hour and a half. Um, discussion, members attending were myself, Ms. Hyman, Miss, Mrs. Tamika Gilbert Floyd, sorry, and, um, this, uh, Mr. Seppi joined us for the first ten minutes, and Mrs. Slaggy, um, joined as soon as he left. The administrators attending were Dr. Gruccio and Ms. Moss, and we discussed, uh, in the first ten minutes, Mr. Seppi shared a possible connection to bring clinic, bring a clinic into our district for the music program at the high school, and the committees, the committee also followed up on researching partnership with professional athletic teams. We reviewed professional development and field trips. The updated curriculum for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year was shared and discussed with changes in the areas of ELA, K through five, CTE, and social studies for grade four and five. Um, we also, to extend on that, we met tonight for an additional, about an hour, um, to further discuss that in our curriculum, um, the textbooks and resources for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. As a result of the meeting, we have, um, our curriculum resources and textbooks on for approval tonight, and the committee will continue to review any updates, and will present to the board at a future board meeting. Uh, the committee also discussed changes in special education program that is reorganizing to the best meet the needs of the students and staff. Contracts and grant opportunities were discussed for ALCOV, Atlantic Prevention Resources, and Teen Mental Health First Aid. These programs will bring important programs for students around mental health, bullying, and suicide prevention. The annual district professional development plan was also shared. Uh, the NJGPA results and action steps were previewed by the committee as Ms. Moss went over tonight, and the updated, uh, updates around equity subcommittees, data gathered, and the application of the information, as well as invaluable professional development that was, that occurred over the summer to support our sta, our staff in the beginning of the school year, feeling prepared and ensure consistency across the district. On a side note, before I go, I just wanted to say, on behalf of the Curriculum Committee, we would like to extend our gratitude to the staff and administration for the work and effort into preparing the curriculum for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. The work did not go, um, go unnoticed, and it's truly appreciated. Our next meeting will be on September nineteenth at seven PM at the Slayball District Office, and topics at this time for the next meeting are, um, none at this time, but we will be reviewing the items. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, we need a motion for eight point two to eight point six.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Mrs. Bonjorno?
Yes.
Mr. Delabarka?
Yes.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Yes.
Ms. Hyman?
Yes.
Mr. Ireland?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Seppi?
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
And Mrs. Slaggy?
Yes.
Okay, we already did personnel, so we're going down to policy. Mr. Ireland?
All right, I will give out the best committee, the Policy Committee's report. We met on Tuesday, August fifteenth, for an hour and six minutes. Uh, myself attended as the chair, Mr. Ireland, uh, Mr. Seppi, Mrs. Bonjorno, and Mrs. Slaggy as the president. Uh, administrators that attended were Dr. Gruccio, Mr. West, and others was Mrs. Alco. Uh, many topics were discussed, and I'll go over to the conclusions now. Policy five-one-one-one, eligibility of residents and non-residents was discussed and revised by the committee. The committee added pre-K, and then, uh, admission, transfer, appeals, replacement, language to the policy. Policy five-one-one-one is up for one reading and waiting for board approval. Policy twenty-four-nineteen, school threat assessment teams is a mandated policy through stress estimate and reviewed by the committee. School threat assessment teams have already been established by the school district and trained. Policy twenty-four-nineteen is up for two readings and waiting for board approval. Policy sixteen forty-one point one, sick leave is a new policy, discussed by the committee and revised by the committee. Policy sixteen forty-one point one is up for two readings and awaiting board approval. Policy fifty- School threat assessment teams have already been established by the school district and trained. Policy twenty-four-nineteen is up for two readings and waiting for board approval. Policy sixteen forty-one point one, sick leave is a new policy discussed by the committee and revised by the committee. Policy sixteen forty-one point one is up for two readings and awaiting board approval. Policy fifty-two thirty, late arrival, early dismissal, and tardiness was discussed and revised by the committee. The committee combined this policy with policy fifty-two forty, tardiness, as well as added the following language to the policy. School interventions will be provided to students for showing a trend of lateness, or, yes, of lateness. In addition, a parent will have the option to pick up their child for field trips with prior approval. Policy fifty-two thirty is up for one reading and waiting board approval. Fifty-two, policy fifty-two forty, tardiness was discussed and abolished by the committee, as it was combined with policy fifty-two thirty. Abolishment of policy fifty-two forty is up for one reading and awaiting board approval. Policy fifty-two fifty, excusal from class or program was discussed and revised by the committee. The committee added language to the policy requiring notification to parents of the activity and opt-out prior to an activity. A written request from the parent has to be approved by a principal or designated beforehand. Policy fifty-two fifty is up for one reading and waiting board approval. Our next meeting is Tuesday, September nineteenth. That's when we'll discuss at five o'clock for our policy stuff. Policy topics to discuss at our next meeting is developing an artificial intelligence policy, and also, we're gonna continue our discussion on regulations. So central administration is beginning the process of adding policy regulations to the district website, excluding safety and security regulations. That's all I have. Mr. West, did I mess up anything on there, or do you have anything to include?
I do not, thank you.
Mrs. Slagi, that's all I have for policy, ma'am.
So, we have new business? Oh, yeah, we can do. All right. Would you like to make the motion? Any second?
Second, Sullivan.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mrs. Bonjourno?
Yes.
Mr. Delabarka?
Yes.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Yes.
Ms. Hyman?
Yes.
Mr. Ireland?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Seppi?
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
And Mrs. Slagi?
Yes.
Okay. For new business? We need a motion for eleven point one to eleven point six. Second, Sullivan. Any discussion? Roll call?
Mrs. Bonjourno?
Yes.
Mr. Delabarka?
Yes.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Yes.
Ms. Hyman?
Yes.
Mr. Ireland?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Seppi?
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
And Mrs. Slagi?
Yes.
Okay. For HIB, we need a motion for twelve point one.
Motion, Sullivan?
Second, Hyman.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Bonjourno?
Yes.
Mr. Delabarka?
Yes.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Yes.
Ms. Hyman?
Yes.
Mr. Ireland?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Seppi?
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
And Mrs. Slagi?
Yes.
Okay. You have your communications, your board calendar, NJ SBA. Do you, does somebody have a report for that? No?
I have something as Vice Presidents of Legislative Services for the Atlanta County School Boards Association that would like to read, an update. Okay? I'll go. It's just brief. There's a few things, well, it's a lot of things, actually, that are going on in the state with legislative updates, but in particular, last month, the governor passed the fiscal year 2024 budget, in which Governor Murphy then signed into law. In addition to the budget, the governor signed, the New Jersey Department of Education implemented a one-year educator certification fee holiday. And the Senate and Assembly approved various other pre-K, twelve education measures in their final voting sessions before the summer recess. Additionally, the governor signed a measure that expands the permissible use of employee sick leave provided under the current law. Another one of the highlights in legislation was, and I think we touched on it a little bit with Mr. Beck earlier, were the, there were several pre-K educational bills, including measures to provide universal free lunch over the course of five years, and to establish various procedures and standards for privatizing school district services. In addition, which we don't have to worry about, because we love our lunch program, but there are, you know, things that come up with privatizing, and we don't have that problem here. But anyway, the Senate had held a voting session on June twentieth and voted to repeal the state resident requirement for school employees and other proposals aimed at alleviating staffing shortages. So I could go on, but here were just a couple of highlights that I thought was important I wanted to share with you tonight, you know, from the Atlanta County School Boards Association as the legislative representative.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we have another public comment section, same rules, but this is for anything. Anybody have anything they want to bring forward? Okay, seeing none. Mr. Ireland, you had something to say?
I'm trying to, oh, we're done, right? Sorry. Okay. So, Dr. Grusio, I was, I meant to say this last month to you, but I just wanted to say thank you for Coach Davis and his high school football team. In July, he put on a football camp. He provided over a hundred and fifty, he did a football camp for a hundred and fifty students that were in our district, and his whole football team did it after a football practice. So I just wanna say thank you for that. It was well-received, and my kids, I'm the head football coach for the youth, for the taxi team here, and my kids still talk about it every day. And we had a bunch of the high school kids there providing the services and stuff and teaching them, and they look up to them, so they still talk about that. They're like, hey, is Trey coming back to practice, blah, blah, blah? So we still bring them back to our practice sometimes, too. So I just wanted to say thank you, if you can let Coach Davis know. Mr. Rutledge was there as well, and some of his staff, so thank you for doing it. We haven't done it in many, many years, but it was well-received. Over a hundred and fifty kids attended this free camp for football, and I took some of his coaching stuff for my youth football people, so it was definitely awesome. So if you can, just let him know. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Dr. Grusio? I have a few things. Mr. Ireland, it just, you know, goes along with our expectations that we have, particularly with our school district forming partnership with our community. And it's an expectation I had for a long time, and I have that for all our coaches and our advisors and our teachers, and thank you for that feedback, because it's so important to embrace, and for the kids to still be talking about it. I was out the other morning, and I did stop to see Coach Davis, and he's a ball of fire. He's excited, he's glad to be here, he loves his kids, he loves his community, so we're off to a good start. And also, I wanna share that, and I haven't shared this all, last school year, but I have to remind myself to share it. This month, and each month when we have, when we have an administrators meeting, each month, we recognize an excellence in leadership, and we present an award. And this month, we had two recipients from the same department, and that was Mr. Curtis Woodrow and Mr. Wayne Holt from our Facilities Department, because they have been literally on the roofs, in the mud, in the trenches, you name it, they've been there, and they have, and their crew, as they lead their crew each and every day to prepare our schools for opening day. So I wanna let everyone know that they've been recognized, and I want the board to be assured that we're ready to open September one. So thank you. Thank you. Okay, anybody else? All right, we need a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second.
Okay.
Aye.
Aye.
Good night.